It is six P M on September sixth. Other college regional school district school committee. Tonight we are live from Bradville town hall. So we have a motion to open.
Second.
I'm taking a shot. And the record show. Seven zero zero. Um, as you want to see, everybody's in. I. United States of America. And so. It's from the last meeting. We have a motion to accept minutes.
Second.
Anybody have any questions on this? Sure, let me end to three separate ones. Right now, it seems like compared to any of the record show. That's the same for one. One, that one, Brad, the other side. In order to see. Group of people give his first time to see. Amy, may I want to keep a time watch on this? This is. I follow it. Very open public comment today, but unfortunately, everybody here in the audience. But this public comment. Really? Uh, student advisor board today is prepared to talk to.
So yesterday. The interview about. They have a fifty fifty favor and pre-planned ceremony. It started seven, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Uh, winter sports are supposed to be kind of happening all last week. Voice back to all had a special event twelve to that call this Wednesday. Mission in five months. And the new craft team. Uh, we got the winter sport competition officially with me at week. And then teams are beginning to receive some of their. And today, after that, Angus Toyota brought in current principal gift much less. Our uh, children, families in the process of.
By.
Are they, these are clothes, right?
Oh, no.
It's all joy.
Okay, they want to talk.
It's joy.
First, he goes.
Yeah. Yeah.
And what, right?
Tonight.
Five, you're perfect. Yeah.
Well. Yes. And how do you discredit? Um, that is.
Oh, very good. Very, very good. Thank you very much.
He's not really on blast for. They're starting to change because they're nothing. Can't make jokes though.
So. Hey, you think. I've done it here.
Behind words.
Gee. Charity of. Policies. Got nothing for you guys tonight. I know we're speaking again to these. Um, this could be anywhere. If we saw them, we'll be there. Policies.
Excellent.
All right.
Yep.
That's what.
South with some agreeable regional school department. School department department. South to three years air school in Westfield, Mass. The school mail site of their leader, the twenty two, twenty three school year. Planning execution of a mutually agreeable contract. Well.
Any questions? Right. Can I get a showing in? The record show.
I will took second assembly agreement by usually the South Italian regional school committee. It's common common education association teacher unit A effective August twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Recommended. Thank you.
If you could give the corrections on. You very much are. Did show hands, except for. With record show. Pass seven zero zero.
Approved. White flame fire as a chief repairman officer. Top of the panel, regional. The tricks in terms of M D L tech, the third E section to. Second.
What's not here? Anybody got any questions? Comments? All right, thank you for showing hands. Record show, motion passes six and a half down to seven, zero, zero. But you're good. Yeah, and then you can stay here.
You're in. My majority.
Yeah, he was a little reluctant. Yes.
Yeah. The following fundraiser for the twenty two, twenty three school year class of twenty twenty three. Don't make recommend a day. So moved.
All right. Any questions on this? Twenty one. Usually we have like forty two.
And I don't mean. So it's, uh, we're doing it at Applebee's. It's like if you bring a form, like fifteen percent of your total goes as donation of the class.
Okay, you gotta have a form. You gotta park somebody outside Applebee's before they come in and. So whether they heard about it or not.
Exactly.
Now, Applebee's won't make that. Isn't the one to get the form, but that's a good way.
Like, why you don't have a kid at the high school? Would you want to?
I know. I don't know. Maybe not.
So if anyone's free, can you see which one first? That would happen.
Do we motion a second as well, right?
I think we did.
I think we did.
All right, can I go show him? Motion passes seven zero zero.
I move to approve home education plans H S twenty two, twenty three dash sixty one through H S twenty two, twenty three dash sixty four recommended. So moved. Second.
Any questions on this? I'm sure I think I've asked. Or is that am I assuming right that they have sixty four of these for the year? And that's lower than last year, right?
Yeah.
Can I just show hands or something? Motion passes seven zero zero. All right, super kind of mother.
Um, I'm gonna go backwards. So what if we sat on the Sims webinar this morning with the state? Um, it was supposed to be, here's a simple template. Take your business data and you can just punch the numbers in. Clay and I worked on webinar was from ten to eleven. Clay and I wrapped up at about three thirty this afternoon to take a mind break. Um, of course, nothing is simple, uh, but I think we made our first go around with it. We're gonna go back and we're gonna do it again. Um, but there's still, we have a lot of questions. Uh, so I did reach out to Mars. Uh, we are a member of them to help, help us try and figure out some numbers so they can bring the best possible estimates to you. Um, the other thing was the budget roundtable. We had a meeting, uh, two weeks ago, uh, with all three towns represented. Uh, we went through a historical represent, representation of our budgets. Uh, we bring a very conservative budget forward and, uh, we showed that over time, we just about meet net school spending, uh, which is the minimum that we are allowed to spend as a school district every year. So it was very well attended. I thought there were great questions. Um, there was no place for me to ask about the one percent that one of the, uh, people on the, in the audience. Um, it wasn't a back and forth webinar, uh, but when I do talk to Steve Kevin, um, I'm gonna talk with him tomorrow. I am going to ask him about that at Mars.
Sounds good. Well, newly appointed Mr. Connor. Since you're staying with us now, we've got your name on the agenda here for the report to give us an update on our athletic, uh, sort of research.
So how much time do I have? Cause I can make. Eleven seconds begin now. Okay, so the complete proposal that we received from J A A Sports, which was sent to Mr. Preswell. Um. Is in your packets. And also the slideshow that I prepared that summarizes the main points. So. It was requested. It was submitted. The second slide. Um, basically says the proposal requested was for development of an athletic master plan for S D G R S D athletic recreation needs. So, um, studying portion of the proposal, and that's what J A A Sports would do. Would evaluate current usage on and off campus sites. Study will, uh, and if the proposal moves forward, um, study will incorporate previously completed topographic survey. Google Maps area of photography. Um, and the scope of work that they're proposing will have six phases. There's pricing information for each phase. Um, and. What will be responsible for providing them is necessary project related base photos, plans and documentation, and providing necessary responses and direction in a timely manner. Um, that's pretty much summarizes the complete proposal. That's in your packet and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
So is this thirty three thousand dollars? Um, the cost for basically assessing our needs?
No, it's also coming up with a master use plan.
Yeah. It's almost cut into like the, the way we kind of look at this is if you look at. Help me, I don't declare if I'm wrong, but basically the first three phases or the first four. Kind of break down and do an assessment of what do we have? How do we use it? How do we wanna use it? What other options are out there? And if we wanna be able to, we kind of have to do something like this in order to figure out whether we wanna be able to make a proposal to the towns as to what kind of options that we need. But in order for us to really know what we need. We need someone to take a look at what we've got, what we're using it, how we're using it. Are we using it correctly? What are the other alternatives that are out there? What's the best way to proceed forward? So it's, it's almost kind of like it's cut into two steps. It's like a preliminary phase and then a development phase. And then they'll turn into a proposal that we can look at and kind of figure out, okay, do we want to proceed? Do we not want to proceed? What kind of options do we, do we have to look at?
Just kind of seems like a lot of money. Like, is this something that we need to spend? Like, for somebody to tell us what we need? I mean, I don't know. I just, maybe I don't understand the scope of the issue.
Here, I guess what we talked about in, in finding a subcommittee was, okay. We need some help on the baseball fields. We need to look at, um. Is there a use? Is there a need? What about looking at a turf field? What kind of options do we have up there from an athletic perspective? None of us certainly know the ins and outs of how to do that from that perspective. If we're gonna, I mean, this is gonna be a drop in the bucket compared to a project that, that we might need to do to move forward.
Right.
Um, and overall, if you look at the amount of hours that you probably gotta put in to do this, probably not that. I mean, Clay, is this, is this a huge number to get something like this done?
Well, for design services and needs assessment, um, that's what's in his proposal. We didn't even seek out other, um.
This is very.
And.
To a building project. When it falls, there was all these steps we went through in the building. Now you can't get away from that.
And they would, right, that's true. That's true. Um, and so at the outcome, we would potentially have, um, multiple options moving forward as well as an estimate cost of what those options would be.
Yes, that was the goal of enlisting is so that we could have something that if we get to a point that we as a committee wanna move forward, we're gonna need to have ammunition that we're gonna have to present to towns. And without this saving them, we don't have the ammunition other than this is what we think we need.
Okay.
We're not experts in this. He certainly is.
Okay.
What was the driver behind this? I mean, I understand the age of our fields and the lack of maybe upbeat for upgrade. You know, so like, like, was there a certain individual or group of individuals that said, you know?
I, I brought it up because it was something that, that sort of was on my mind. I know when we did talk to Steve and when I talked to Ted, this was actually something that was in the works during the actual building proposal. When we redid the, the, the interior buildings. But at that point, they thought it would be too big of a lift to do at that time, so they delayed it.
Um, so if I remember, not to stop you, but if I remember Steve saying last, maybe last year and or beginning of this year, we had money already allocated for leechers. And I think that was for the soccer fields.
No.
What, what is that for?
I have no idea. I have no idea. All I know is at this point.
There was money set aside. Already allocated. Boss, whatever it's called. But what I'm saying is we had money coming to us for improvement to something either for seating or something and, you know, I'd have to go back to the minutes to find out exactly what it is. But is, are we moving forward with that or are we just halting that? And, and.
It's sort of, it's sort of all come. I don't think that boss raised enough money to.
What does boss stand for?
I don't know. It was a, it was a.
There we go. Okay, thank you.
It was, it was an external fundraising group. Um, that part of their goal is to raise money to help offset costs or supply bleachers to replace the ones that got pulled down when we, when they redid the track. So one of the big issues and sort of the drivers of this was some of the challenges that we have with the current baseball fields. Because that was the big push. Do we wanna have the games of wall? If we go there, then we lose control over that. If we wanna do them on site, then we need to relook at the field. And since of what we've got on there. Is a turf field something that we can realistically do? Would there be enough money to generate there to make it work? Well, how much would that project even cost? In order to answer those questions, we have to do something like this.
Okay, so in, in this, you know, in this kind of, you know, evaluation of plan.
Yeah.
Were, would there be any like room for, say, adding netting? You know, like you should say the JV university.
Yeah.
Side of the, you know, I'm using baseballs as well as an example, you know, like a lot of fields you go to, there are netting to protect the public and your vehicle and everything else. Like, is that something that?
That's always.
As a design.
Things on the table like the.
I don't mean, I don't have the actual proposal in the plan, so.
No, this, the reason that we enlisted and Steve suggested that we use this company is that they helped us when we were developing the track, the redo of the tracker. They, they were involved with that. And these guys redo external fields all over New England and they're, and they're, he's quite the expert in it. So this is why we reached out to him and just kind of said, look, and we haven't come into a meeting, had to find a meeting. Show them the grounds, what we have, what we've got available, what we kind of thought about. I mean, tennis courts came up. There's lots of things to come up. But in order for us to really figure out what are our options? What can we do? How much would A, B, C, D, E cost us?
Right.
We're gonna get somebody to take a look at this that knows what they're doing. This is really step one. Before we go and put this forward as a proposal that would be a capital request to the towns. We obviously need to have something in hand that would show here's what our due diligence that we've done on our end. Figure out what the cost would be. I mean, if, I don't even know what the cost would be. Do we have it set up where we decided, you know, we fundraise a certain portion, we go to the towns for the other. There's so many different ways that we can go. That's down the line. We need to get this first step done first and then we'll figure out whether it's even an option.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they're, they're going to do like an actual, you know, schematic of a three D image, you know, a computer base where they can, you know, three D in. Okay, this is what a fence would look like. This is what like.
I don't know, but that's.
You know, a complete layout.
Blueprints.
Yeah, John. That's what I want.
No, okay.
I wanna, I wanna go see a front.
Kenny. I don't know if he's providing blueprints. I feel like if you look at this breakdown, like the first part of it, he's looking at the data review and the site evaluation. Then it's gonna look at the existing playing fields and the use. How are we using it now? What are the, what's the field demands for the school and potentially outside sort of the that may wanna use these? And then what are the alternative field layouts that we've got if you want to start this with the level? You know, certainly the start around.
Right.
Then you've got on the second side, you've got the development of the preferred master plan and then a PowerPoint that would have the options for us to consider to take a look at.
So options with cost, but to get to that's a rate point, doesn't sound like beyond that.
Right.
Yeah.
And sometimes if this were the, the company that were going to do the actual construction.
Well, yeah, it's not, that's.
No way. But we'll have, if we went to those companies that were actually going to do the work, they would probably do this. Pretty well.
Right.
Right. They would talk with it absolutely. So that was.
Yeah, Joanna Gaines would have her laptop and she would design your, you know, let's be honest. Right.
You know, I work for a school manufacturer. They, we manufacture furniture and somebody wants to do this. Do you want a company to come in and just make you pay them to do this portion of it? But you can go to the actual company that's actually going to do all of this work, give you the blueprints, do everything. But they're gonna do this part of it for free.
I mean, we could design it ourselves and say, this is what we're, we're looking for. This is what we want.
But I think it's good to have the absolute professional in this. You know, the person that's going to be doing an outside design, an actual thing.
Yo, the guy. The gentleman that put forward this, he had, his company actually, I mean, we could use him to do the construction. The challenge is gonna be in where, where it, it won't necessarily work that way, Erica, is that if we get to a point where we wanna move forward and we wanna enlist somebody to do the construction, there's a whole, there's a whole process, play incorrect with R F P.
Yeah, and what, um, Erica's talking about is a design build firm.
Right.
Um, and.
Yeah.
They would, they would include that in their proposal. We could.
Right.
Simply use.
Contract with any of them.
No, this is, well, first of all, there's nothing in the budget for any of this. This is like a person. Right?
Right.
Um, we could use this proposal and each of these, those phases, there's about a paragraph description of what's involved with the deliverable at the end in phase six is the meat.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So we could use this proposal that's here to write a scope and work for a bid, where is I build firm.
Right.
But I, I strongly believe that the buildings and grounds folks need to be part of this conversation. Um, this was just the first introduction of this.
Yeah, and that was whole part. Cause we talked, we were gonna have you Ted and I just do a ten, one buildings.
We just scheduled the.
If, if I can just interject, I have spoken with Eric about this and his concerns are really about, um, and I don't understand all the stuff that he talks about, but using fields and grass fields and you can only use those so many times and then you have to give them a rest. And then the baseball fields, like he wants to have like a capital plan for how we are going to maintain the fields and the grounds at our school because they are, they have not been. We have our track, we put a playground in, but we have not been maintaining and grassing and overseeding and resting. And, and again, all the stuff I don't understand. Um, but he can, we can invite him in at our next meeting and he can explain it to you. But like he said, he's like, we really do need to start investing in our grounds if we, they're gonna get too far gone and then it's gonna be, you know, there's no coming back. And I, and I think a lot of this came from when our baseball fields were a mess. And then there was the discussion of should we play at Wally Park or what's more cost effective? Paying Wally Parker fixing our own fields. And then if we don't fix our own fields, then we lose control of what happens if Wally Park goes away, then we don't have baseball fields anymore. So there's all this stuff and, and I'm just putting out there that I have spoken to Eric and with building in grounds and he definitely wants to be part of this. He has to be part of it. Um, but he's been asking for a few years now to get a capital plan going. Um, at least we, a, a five year plan on how we can improve the ground so we know what we're doing, how much it's going to cost and we can share it with the public. Um, because our, our fields are definitely in need of some help.
And Eric, that, that preliminary meeting we had with him, he was, he was in agreement with this, this proposal.
Can I guess, is this the only company that does this? I mean.
All right. The only rule, rule of three. Right.
Right.
I think if this is something worse, then we should look at getting to more.
I agree.
Estimates. When you took the building project back in what, twenty fourteen? Did they do an assessment or a plan on the grounds? They put a new track.
The original plan was a whole complete rebuild of the school and not got shot down.
I was J C J architect, so they probably still have them. Eric would know.
No, we didn't know with that, how was, when we got to toward the end.
Uh huh.
You know, of a design base. We could see that we, we couldn't afford, that we didn't have the time to carry this any, any further. You know, that we had to stop at the boat, at the building.
The town shot it down.
That was, that was underlying.
Yeah.
That was a public vote.
So.
But did they do, I mean, if they put it in track that they could stop there.
This is separate side.
That was just.
And we don't have irrigation and, and there's a water man, you know, every year.
It doesn't apply to this.
And I think when, when we did, when we did talk about this or Steve, the rea, the reason that we kind of went with these developments, it was a known entity. What they were kind of proposing was below. A threshold, Clay, that wouldn't necessarily need to go.
This, this caught, proposal of this is below the threshold where we have to get three sealed bins.
Right.
Put it out. It's under thirty five thousand dollars and, but that again. Um. This was pricing that was done, um. Things could change, you know? Uh, and the final thing I'll say is like, some of the stuff that Eric's very concerned about is a cost analysis of maintenance. If you put in a new field, say, and it is not grass, there's cost for maintenance of grass.
Yeah.
And there's cost of maintenance of synthetic or, you know, the new surfaces. So that's what we would really need. Um, ultimately, in any proposal or design build proposal that's submitted is that's what Erica is definitely want. That's why it's important that, um. You know?
I understand that now. Um, there's no, the word maintenance doesn't come up at all in any of this, which I think to me was why, like, it's, it seemed like a lot at first. But understanding now the bigger picture, um, I do, I understand the importance of this for sure.
And we don't, I would like it broken down a little bit more than six bullets. I'd like to see, I mean, I could research online myself as a company and what they do. I get that, but like, you know, phase one through six. Truly not broken down into.
But what are you gonna be doing for the eight thousand bucks? I really.
Well.
There, is, is there more detail in this or?
Yes, there's about a paragraph in the proposal. Okay, that's in all your packets for each phase.
Here.
But I wasn't gonna put that up in, in this. Because this is the first time we're talking about there.
No, no, I get it.
There is that, that's what I think. There is information here.
Yeah. There we go. Okay, so it's this one that I missed. For example. Okay, yes, so to answer your question, look, it breaks up each phase.
I hope you're all grateful that I didn't just read the entire proposal.
We, maybe we're no, I wouldn't have asked.
Like in our packet, are we missing a page?
Yes, yes. I went from one, cause I see phase three and four and five and six, but I don't see one and two.
That's, no, that's okay.
That's all right. We can just have it reset fixed.
Oh dear.
We have time. Look at that. I mean, you know me, I'm all for.
Yeah. We actually asked Steve, like, do we need to get three? You know, he's like, look, these guys are the, the, this gentleman that he, that he, that was brought in seems to be quite, I don't know what you wanna call it. He's sort of like the expert in the area.
I'm sure.
And, and since we weren't, we're not talking about the building proposal, which is a whole different thing. It's a preliminary sort of study for us. Um, and we were even talking, you know, before Steve, like even feeling this out where do we have, we may not, we may not have specifically allocated funds for this in this year budget, but do we have funds in the budget that we can get some of this done? So that we can start, we're not gonna make a decision this year on what we're gonna do, but even if we can get this done within the next year, so that we at the end, like this time next year, we get a whole proposal ready so that we as a committee can try to figure out, okay, here's our options. What, what do we want to do?
Yeah, I'm all for that. I, I just think more detailed information and I'm not talking a lot.
Did you, did you read this? No, 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 okay, so.
I can't even see it.
So maybe, so that, so maybe what we did, cause we're gonna have, we're gonna have our next one, even subcommittee. So maybe, so that, so maybe what we did, cause we're gonna have, we're gonna have our next subcommittee meeting. Is that?
He's not in here anymore.
I'm just saying, like, I was alone with a ninety-three Trans Am Ram Air red, I saw the car carrier, I followed it. Down the Ransin Greenfield, like, waiting for that car to get, you know, taken off, and I went in, saw a salesman, I said, I'm buying that car, and he said. How you know it's not sold, he said, I don't care, I wanna buy it. So what I'm getting at is, like, I want the improvement, and I do want, you know. Nice or grounds, trust me, I love shiny things, but, you know.
So maybe, if if it's maybe, we'll get, we'll get the whole bit sent out. Maybe we could just put it on a point of conversation here at our next meeting. And hopefully before then, we might even have a finance subcommittee meeting. Um, that we can get a little bit more info for everybody, and then that way we can just kind of. Figure, even if we wanna proceed with the first part of this, to see what this stands your level, um. So that way by, we we get to a point where we can really start having some discussions on this work. We're, we wanna move forward, what it looks like and.
So I would just love, all I need is. The rest of this, exactly, like, this is, this is enough information for me to get a little bit more comprehensive. Uh, I just need the rest of it, yep. And and again, like I said, like Eric is really pushing for this, he said he has been for a while, like, we've gotta get a handle on our grounds.
Yeah.
Um, and at least figure out some sort of plan moving forward on how to maintain them. Um.
Yeah, we're gonna water, I I haven't seen a spick in any.
We have, have it on the soccer field inside the trap, that's the only place we have irrigation.
And I mean, even a place to hook up a garden. I mean.
That's it.
Spray it on the infield, get the dust off, you know, yeah.
The lady soccer field is awful.
Yeah, this, this was, this was the, this was the top year, and now we've got, um, I've heard we've got kids that are looking at. Can we do lacrosse, can we do stuff, I mean, obviously, we may need, we may need some. A different setup, I think grass fields and lacrosse don't necessarily work very well.
Okay.
Um, from longevity perspective, I mean.
That would be great, lacrosse.
I know a guy, I know a guy who knows how to start a sport program.
All right.
No, it's not.
Uh, subjects, negotiations, we just. Anything going on, we are, we have anything upcoming from them?
No.
No.
We were good for about three years.
Finance, we'll have a meeting upcoming, we'll have a report next time, um, Erica, anything from?
Just, just to touch on the buses, because LPVAC didn't get, it was twenty-five, ten million dollars. To get twenty-five of the electric buses. But there is no point that those electric buses in the foreseeable future, because they're not built. The companies, the companies that make these buses aren't even built. Those co- like, they didn't even read it before, again. Yeah, so these companies are just now starting to get rolling, but they don't know that they're gonna manufacture in the United States. They don't know if they will be manufacturing, um, electric buses.
But we get twenty-five.
But the LPVAC has an award for ten million dollars.
They.
Yeah, state, state did, but it's all, it seems so hoping, like, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever, none. So, related to to, um, buses, um, are we still having bus drivers?
Oh, yeah.
Big time. And the site in Agawam, they're going to be moving soon, because the buses from Woodland, they're gonna be moving to Agawam. It's not Shaker, it's. Um, they've already gotten engineers to come in to do their, like, uh, needs assessment. You know, to make sure that it's not just gonna be local on our own often, things like that, so it's, it's pretty much a done deal. I think they're just gonna pave it. You know, it's just adjacent to where they already are now. They have to work on getting, um, so I think most of our buses, or half of them are diesel. And we have gas tanks over at Woodland, am I correct in stating that? Or diesel tanks? I can't remember, we have one or the other, and so they have to put that in over at the relocation, no, that's it. But how is a moving that, moving where the buses are housed is not gonna change routes for drivers to design it. No information on that.
Not from my understanding, when they, they.
The toll on bus is gonna stay at Ted's house. Now, I think they took the green bus up here.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they did move it. Did they plug them in for the block in here, or are they most?
They do in the cold, I mean.
Yeah.
When it gets cold out, they they come in early, like, super early and start them on, yes.
Yeah, I mean, they should, uh, be plugged in online, yeah.
All right. Um, we had a corporation meeting while I was away on vacation, but I'm gonna get an update, sorry, what went down, the agenda didn't look like it was too heavy. Uh, policy, we've got a meeting in two weeks on Thursday, yeah. Building the grounds.
The sixteen.
Yeah, the sixteen.
What time is the sixteen?
I L T, oh, sorry.
Or is it the twentieth?
You've got a meeting.
We just had one, are they done speaking about it?
I don't know.
We had one today.
So I was here for the listening session, so I'm gonna defer to you for I L T.
I had to choose, and they're here for the listening session, or I L T. I wanna go.
I do. No vibes.
No, that's fine, I can change it.
We got one, but I'm gonna change it. So participating in building that ground.
All right, we can, we can just.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I can do it earlier in the day.
I'm, I'm free.
Can we do it, like, say, ten? Okay, let's just put it in there. I don't wanna change the date, I know, we got a lot to do, so I'd rather. Sixteen at ten, thank you.
All right, Ryan, we're interested in the I L T.
We talk a lot about the innovation pathway, uh, SRS. Uh, that reminds me of D L E, so they already have a program, I set up about internships. And we can halfway this more of setting up coursework to then put them into internship. And then kind of, cause a lot of recruiters aren't doing the traditional college route anymore, they're doing, you know, um. Like tech stuff, we also wanna keep them within our district, instead of moving them away to go do their other forms of education, so, um. That's our main topic today, was setting up coursework, applying to both either information, which is the internship will be at Wally. It's on our big. Uh, facilities for in the information pathway, and then healthcare is the other, the other pathway, and that will be staged primarily. They start in ninth grade applying for it, and then they get, they have to take certain courses through ninth, tenth, eleventh, and then twelve would be their hundred hour. Uh, internship experience, which they are, do, they can do deal. I think it's twenty to twenty-five students per semester that do, if it internship program. Pairing them further with that, what they want to do post in school.
Very cool.
And they always talk about, they have a new program coming for ninth grade about computers, specifically for that long computer pathway. Actually, it sounds like a work on, could really mean, but. It's all talking about like how a computer actually functions, like the brain in there, and then also. Like how networks work, and how they all speak to each other, like, it's really.
So you're signing up for this one?
So Ryan, I have a question, cause I remember this, this term pathways came up a couple of years ago, pre-COVID. Um, and then. Yes, and then it kind of sounds like we're revisiting it now, now, if I remember correctly. Back then, this was something that the state, it was a reminder from the state, and the state was kind of. Creating the, what those pathways were and what the courses needed. Right, it to fit those pathways, so is that still the case? Not only that we're organically creating, it's not something that we're.
Phase of it so far, we just, like, ten, hop over, I think, Johnson. Um, yeah, then they tell us kind of like, we already have a lot of the courses.
Mm-hmm.
In our building, um, and like, we already have a internship program already set up. Have good time on our integration roots and what.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, wellness.
Yeah, G I.
Spain?
None, nothing.
Technology.
Next week.
Um, Amy, am I still in that? It's up there, but, well, I can put, I wanna put you back. Yeah, okay.
Captain, Mr. Jeff. Done? Uh, that'd be hiatus, usually, Jack, I'm Jake, that's your plan.
Of the, the part of Lucas, the last two meetings, I was at work and couldn't attend, so.
Uh, I have the last two meetings, I've also been at work.
Yes.
We had, um, an athletics meeting, uh, Mr. Carmel, uh, Mr. George and I met, um, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, I mean, a successful fall season, uh, I'm sure, um. George was gonna do sort of postseason meetings with the coaches, kind of go over stuff. No, I think that's a, we can only have one, I think that's a copy from something else. It's only a, it's only a P A time. Yes.
That was the.
That was the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We had that, we had a meeting over at the, at the, uh. Town Hall. Three of us were on that. But, yeah, we, that's sort of alive if we need it. Um, what there's going on, we've got, again, almost two hundred students. That are signed up, that are part of winter athletics. Um, so from a popular percentage of our. Class size that are actually participating in in athletics at the school, it's a pretty great. Happy and and healthy percentage of kids that are in a number of different sports, so.
And I think it's great. First time in history, Southwick, that we have a school choice participant.
Awesome.
I mean, uh, not school choice, a, uh, homeschool.
Very good. That's awesome.
Yeah.
Here.
There's lots of school choices.
I, I meant to, I meant to say homeschool.
Like a lot of.
If you school choice, you don't have the option to play.
That's what it meant, like, there's a lot of kids.
I meant, I meant homeschool.
The numbers are actually high each year, but what? We got, we're gonna have an offer, we started with thirteen kids.
Four to thirty, yeah.
Oh, yeah, we thirty-four last year.
Yeah, so.
Awesome.
Really. Um, legislative, I went to the M A S C conference. Um, beginning in November, it's actually rather interesting. Um, I wasn't able to make it first night because the girls were having their playoff games, so we went. So unfortunately, hanging there with Pope almost right till the very end. Um, but Wednesday, I got there Tuesday night late, uh, or sorry, Wednesday night, right? Um, they had a big talk the first morning on understanding student mental health crisis, causes, impact and solutions. Um, that was the only major topic. For the whole weekend concerning academics. Um.
Get a bag.
Get a nice bag. I got a bag, yeah, I've got a bag. Um, it was interesting, there there was, we had that and. They had a clinical psychologist there, they had, um, somebody from the, the executive director of the Center for Behavioral Health. Um, they went through how the kids have, being out and sort of the masking and everything with COVID has. Surprised, pride, been a, uh, a detriment to the kids and that they're trying to get them back in school and. And, uh, get them moving forward and they, they, uh, one of the big pervading comments, which I found interesting, we don't wanna really concentrate on results. We just wanna make sure that they're, that they're glad to be back in school.
We, not to stop you, but do we still have districts, like, is Bonhampton still wearing a mask? Like, are we still?
I don't think anybody's wearing masks.
I don't know, not that. Wired, I don't think so, not that I know of.
No.
No, it was, it was an interesting talk, um. But the, I think the general to- take from it was like, you know, we really, we just got them back, we don't really wanna make sure, we don't wanna really look at. What the results are right now, um, which personally, I actually have a little funny.
Results of.
Like scores, they weren't really, they, they just kind of kind of like. We're not looking on the highest priority of what they were saying, just come back from this, let's take it easy and not really push them too much. Um, that was the speaker, though, it was interesting, I mean, these were clinical psychologists and. People that they, the, that they had to come in, um, when they were talking about, there was, there was a number of. Um, equity courses, sort of, I went to one on creating and promoting equitable conditions in schools. Um, and it was the, the number of representatives from the Beverly School District, which was very interesting. Um, I like, their approach was, and and a number of these districts, I'm assuming it's because of their size. They have higher specific, um, diversity, equity, inclusion positions in their district. That really took it in a different direction, where they did not just focus in on that, it was sort of an all encompassing, um. Equitable experience type of position that they had. Um, it was, it was interesting, I, it it was. Interesting to hear how they did that, it was something that they developed over the last couple of years, um. It was, it was, was I open to hear what they, what they're going through and what they were kind of talking about, um. They had, you know, run a class on building leadership capacity in the school committee, and in the central office, which was kind of interesting, cause we had. Obviously, a number of changes in our central office, um. What we compared to a lot of the other districts out there, um, are in really good shape with respect to our communication. Um, we, I've heard some horror stories on. School committees and people not talking to each other and it just being extremely animus and. Um, not a lot of communication between the district and the school committee, and and we just certainly. Don't seem to have those kind of issues, um, so that was nice to hear that, okay, we're doing, we're doing better than some of the other districts out there. Um, then at night, they gave a presentation to a Martha Garcia, who was teacher of the year. Um, she was a teacher in Boston that was doing, um, a lot of sort of. It wasn't an inclusion set, it was really a lot of the kids from foreign countries that were in the district. Trying to make sure that they were activated in the area and doing well, and she, she did a fantastic job, they had a nice little video about her. They had her come up and she was able to speak, and she was originally from. And, uh, or so, so, well, Southern American country she came from, um, but it was, she did a fantastic job. Um, it was very well received, um, Friday morning, they had another. Root, the whole, everybody was on a meeting, lead, leading and implementing equity with intentionality. Um, and this was from the. They were from a different district. That one was a very different setup from. Cambridge, this was Cambridge Public Schools. Um. Very different tone than the equity class that I listened to the day before, um. Much more. Pointed and this is what we need to do, and we're gonna try to fix all these, and it was. It was an interesting conversation, um. Was certainly some points that were, that were, uh, that they were trying to drive home, but I think, the take I got with it was. I think sometimes some of these speakers forget who's in the room.
So they, that sounds like they delegate more than they, you know, look for, you know, middle ground and.
There was a purpose, they, they, the, the gentleman who really spoke a lot was the. Um, the chief equity officer for Cambridge Public Schools. They, 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 the gentleman who really spoke a lot was the, um, the chief equity officer for Cambridge Public Schools. Um, and. It was. He was very much. Had purpose in what he was trying to get done, or, or the day before, when I was listening to the kids from Beverly, the people from Beverly. It was more of a, we want to make sure that, that everybody is welcome. We want to make sure that everybody feels comfortable. We want to make sure that everybody feels safe, that they, and, and that I understand, and we try to do that here too. The, the conversation concerning Cambridge was very much. These issues have happened, this is, the, the kids have experienced it, and we're gonna fix it, and we're gonna. It was a very different tone. Um.
So, yeah.
Well, yeah, sure, they had different issues.
No.
Um, it was, it, it was interesting to see the different sort of levels of, of where people were at. Um. And then there was, uh, uh, one on school safety that I went to, they were talking about. Um, threat assessments. Um. Talked, they were going over sort of, uh. The, the training, I think that we go over, but they, almost a step further where if they got a, and this was. Um, they worked exclusively with the Cambridge Police Department, and, and they have a full team. That it's, it's sort of independent of the actual drills and everything that we're doing in schools. Where this was a conversation specifically about if we got, or if they had someone that became. That sort of came up on their threat assessment. That the police are involved, that they go and do investigations, they go to double check to see what's going on. Um, there was a representative there from the state police, or supposed to be somebody there from the FBI, who wasn't able to be there. But it was a very interesting conversation. Um, I know we're having a meeting in a couple of weeks. Um.
Just like, no, we do that as well in our district. We look very closely. Whenever there's a threat assessment, we work with our police. If we have a threat. Uh, we talk to the police officers, they'll go and they'll check our homes. We create safety plans in the morning. Um, we work very closely with our local police as well.
Yeah, they had, they have, they have a, a very extensive and well set up process in Cambridge. It was very impressive. Um. But it was certainly very interesting here. Um, and then I went on to want to tell you, like, it was what was, what the school business officers want school committee members to know. Um, and I'm glad that everything that they brought up that, that we were well, well aware of. Um, I guess there's some committees out there that don't really necessarily understand exactly. What the school business officers or in charge of, what they want us to know, what we need to understand, so that they, they have a good idea. What they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis.
Well, I figured.
Yeah. Dangerous, but from what they were describing, it was everything that we, we've already certainly bring up at these meetings. Uh, and then finally, it was. Got to pick one on there. It was, you were talking about heating. Where it was how schools can combat extreme heat with equitable access to modern air conditioning. It was a, it was a, uh. A push on heat pumps. It was a push on heat pumps. Um, but there was, um, a representative there from a brand new school in the Boston area that took up building. And they, they're heating and cooling the same with heat pumps, like geothermal.
Geothermal based heat pumps.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's big.
It's impressive.
That's big.
Wow.
Okay, was there something they were doing like?
Well, they don't, it's, you get, you get.
It's a, essentially, it's a vacuum, but that's big model.
Well, it's, I mean, from an efficiency perspective, like, you know, we get like.
Where does the new air come in?
Well, no, it's comfort, the heat comes from the cool.
It's subterranean.
Yeah, it's heat up, fifty degree air, it's a bit of a potter, and you cool down to be really cooler. But if you're talking, like, you know, we get like a gas furnace or a, a natural gas furnace, you get like ninety-eight percent efficiency, that's really, really good. These heat pumps are like six hundred percent efficient. Like, it is phenomenal.
But they're six hundred five.
I'm a huge fan of D U, but that's for best for new construction.
Yeah.
It is, I think, with my own.
This is not something that we can afford. But it was, even, but they did, they did say that there's certainly seen more hot days. At the beginning of the school year, at the end of the school year, I, obviously, we have. Intermittent issues on our second floor, the middle school, um, or at, at Powder Mill. I mean, it's, it's. It's something that we even weird deal with, obviously, here. I knew with the high school last year, there were a number of days at the end that were. Hot in the, in the schools.
I saw, you know, so on that note. Not really paying attention to classrooms when, you know, I walk in. Do we have shades?
Yes.
Or blinds?
Yes.
You know, old school white.
So, black.
At all.
They're black.
Well, black attracts.
No. Absorb it, or, yeah, they're like a netting.
White reflects, you know, but. On the glass, like, what we, insulated and stuff like.
They do think our windows are treated. And I think.
Well, in between a double pane with argon, which was, you know, ultra light.
Yeah, I don't think we've got, I, I think we have our reflector. They're holding on the windows, but I don't know that we've got double pane with argon. But I, I was not a part of that decision in the building projects, so that, I don't know.
They didn't really talk about that. They were, they were, the company was trying to. So. That in a nutshell, more than a nutshell, was my experience at M A S C.
One question, did you, were you, um, voting on anything?
I don't know when the vote was, but I wasn't aware when the votes were. Okay, so there.
Yes, okay.
That's why you vote.
Okay.
The, uh, there was only two or three things that were up for votes. There wasn't really anything controversial, uh.
That was the food.
The food was, um.
Fair to remember.
Nah, probably on the other side of there. It was, it was alright. I mean, the accommodations, the accommodations are, are interesting.
I heard that they tore it down right after the conference and they're rebuilding.
They need to. What I, whether I stay in the location, oh, yeah, see, I'm, I, I'm staying offside though.
No, because you were going to all the face.
No, I, even if I was going to all the things. Like, I got there Wednesday night and I had reserved my room. About as early as you could get, when they sent the notice out, I reserved my room.
Yeah.
I think I, my room was in a, I think I had to go all the way to, like. Hyannis, get to my room. I mean, I was walking four levels. And then when I get in there, they don't have that elevator, escalators or elevators or anything like that. He's like, follow the signs. I said, okay. So I followed the sign, I had my bag. It said, my room number, go up. Well, I go up two flights of stairs, then I go all the way down to the end hall, and I go down another flight stairs to get back up. And it was, it was crazy. So, if I go next year, I think I'm gonna vote for the offside. There's super definitely, like, it's a level here on that little piece of delicate.
Sure, they tore it down of every building.
I think I, I think I hope for next year.
We'll see, there you go.
We didn't talk about the police.
Started? There you go. Yeah, it is, it is interesting. I mean, there, there's. Tons of people there, um, from all over, um. It seemed to be new people, it seemed to touch base with somebody. It was, uh, it was an interesting experience. So. That's the, you know, meeting. And we're getting the questions. Where's it? Hockey on Friday. What are you? Cheating.
Saturday.
Okay.
Tracks on Sunday, basketball, Wednesday is scrimmage.
Oh. Girls, I think.
Girls, that's the state, and that's all.
All right, call Tommy. We still have nobody here in the audience, so we're gonna forego that. Um, old business. New business. All right, I just have one comment. Um. Amy is gonna be with us for her last time tonight, I believe, right? What? So, Amy has got a, a, a new position with the district. She's gonna be helping in our I T department. Um, Amy, I just wanted to send my thanks and, and all your hard work for the years that you've done this since I've been here. Um.
Oh, we should have brought a cake, I mean.
The half, why you don't want to not say anything?
I know, I've already cried, it's right on Friday, it was not happening again, it marched on.
Well, I just wanted to tell a big thank you for all your.
Amy, how long have you been in this position?
Eight, six weeks, yeah, six and a half years, yeah. She, so she's literally been in Jen's. Uh-huh, right-hand man.
So, so, it's not goodbye, it's.
See her smiling face and he, we'll have, we'll have a newly. Who's named Erin.
Erin.
And Erin's fairly much always.
Next month.
Next month. So Erin will be with us. And she'll want to. For the last two years, she's been burning. Amy, Amy's a hockey mom.
I'll be in eye.
See, I hope somebody else watches this. Um, all right, just want to get a motion to adjourn, seven.
Seven.
Amy, the motion passed, seven, Erin here. Seven and a half.
All right, uh.